Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting of the Athol Royalston Regional School Committee to order. First line of business, just before I forget, to let everybody know that if you're going to address the committee for an agenda item, et cetera, this evening, please come up to the microphone. Committee members try to use, you know, talk in the direction of a microphone because AOTV has requested that they have a little bit better sound available, and that's why there are numerous microphones out. And also, you are being recorded this evening for playback on the district website, AOTV and WVAO, the AOTV radio station. Mitch?
Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands, whoa, nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all. Thank you.
Approval of minutes, January fifteenth, 2020. Is there a motion? Mitch? Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. Public input is, Dave, thank you. Student representative report, not here tonight. Okay, we'll go on to the recognition portion. I just wanted to indulge the committee by moving the staff member of the month up first because that person has to go to another meeting, so Tom Talecki.
Just in time, I was a little worried. I'm very happy to introduce you to Christopher Fong. And maybe you'll still remember, during last year, I think Al retired, and it would be a very difficult position to fill. I think it was recognized shortly at this time last year for being a staff member of the students having great slope, and leaving the building at this time. So I knew it would be a challenge, but when we posted, and I got applications, Kristen's stood out probably more than any I've ever seen, and turned out to be as good in person as ever. We're happy to say, for many reasons. So you're an incredible replacement. We're looking for ten indicators for high-quality teachers, and walking through Kristen's room, you see those qualities almost every time you walk in. Their core of students from last year to now grew thirteen percent, and the average is the highest. There was one little glitch, she had a long commute, it was seven hundred miles according to Siri, but fortunately, it all worked out, and she had plans to move in the area, so congratulations to Kristen Fong.
Thank you.
We'll go to the school committee, Ken?
No.
Mitch?
Just wanted to take the opportunity to congratulate all of our parents and families who are in the audience every week, every month, rather you come to us with your students of the month and scholar athletes of the month, and we know how much work it takes on your part to encourage them and to support them, and I want to say thank you on behalf of myself and the school committee.
Thank you. Deb?
No.
Bill?
No.
Tammy?
Chuck?
John?
Nothing here.
Okay. Onto the student of the month, ACES.
We have two students of the month, I'm going to be presenting one with care professional, Ms. Jen Carson, who doesn't want to speak, but I'm going to make her come up and hand it over. So, we have two students of the month, the first is grade three, three students, Peyton Brenner was in Ms. DeNardo's class, and what Miss Carson and Ms. DeNardo said. Peyton is the epitome of a hard-working, dedicated third-grade student. We've had the pleasure of knowing Peyton for two years, and we have watched him grow into a confident writer and mathematician. Peyton has been working diligently on his reading skills, and they have grown tremendously since the start of school year. His mathematical reasoning, using of challenging vocabulary terms, and his ability to tackle challenging problems each day that receives a summing up. For these very reasons, I couldn't think of anyone more fitting to receive student of the month. Way to go Peyton, Mr. DeNardo. And our second, from the early childhood side of the house, the teacher who now makes it one of the common presenters for us, and this is Mr. Frankie Visko.
I'd love to introduce to you Frank Visko Jr. Frankie is a very hard-working student, who is in very difficult times with reading. Frankie has done his work very hard and never gives up. Frankie enjoys school and doing his work, especially math. He really likes to complete his faculty with great effort. He is an active participant while at the rug during class lessons, not needing any reminders to raise his hand to the class. Not only is he a good student, he's considered a role model in class. He pushes in other students' chairs when they forget. He puts his supplies away at the end of an activity or assignment. When asked to go to the rug, he does so in a very timely manner, and sits in his assigned spot, and raises his hand, showing a quiet signal. When walking down the hallway, whether alone, in a small group, or with the class, he is modeling appropriate hallway behavior. Frankie Visko is a hard, sorry, I'm sorry, is kind, loving first-grade boy, who's a happy little fellow. He's a happy little fellow that brings a smile to my face every day. Frank Visko Jr. demonstrates the ACES motto, we are kind, we are safe, we are responsible, we are ACES. Congratulations Frankie.
Our student of the month for RCS is our first grader, Tiana Corbin. Poor Tiana is homesick and couldn't be with us, and so, I hope that she does get to watch this, and I commission her speedy recovery, as I do all our students, we have a lot of kiddos who are out sick this week. So I'd like to tell you a little bit about Tiana, who I am sure is going to grow up to be a school principal, because she is apprising me of what's going on at RCS on a regular basis. She is a real ball of sunshine, she's all the time smiling, she's really friendly, happy to be in school, not shy about participating at all in class. It's really been great to see Tiana grow, especially over the last couple of months, she's been working hard, using her SEL strategies that she's been learning, and we really love that she's taken so much pride in being a good first-grade student. Tiana really tries to make sure that everybody at RCS is taken care of all the time. She has a big heart, a big smile, and she's striving to have big first-grade marks as well. So Tiana, congratulations, we'll make a big deal about her in school tomorrow, so hopefully she'll be back tomorrow.
Tom? You all set?
Just confirming that Anthony Gutkoff is not here. Anthony? Someone look at his mic, he doesn't answer. So, Anthony Gutkoff is a fifth-grade student, and I first thought of nominating him when he was a teacher's teacher, he'll load train. Just spotted Anthony, I think a trash, little man, he's a little broken, but he's a long enough student, ten-year-old, you know, trash, nothing. Turns out it was the same boy who, three days earlier, had a girlfriend, and I thought it was just a wonderful pattern, perhaps, and as two of his teachers were shooting at Mr. Gilmore, he didn't answer. Text me a quote, I was about to read a quote, "You don't want to look for it." They both texted me, within my fifty minutes, and they both said essentially the same thing. The first one became, James, he's strong academically, he's meticulous, meticulously completes his assignments, he's inquisitive by nature, and cares deeply about his friends at the school. So Anthony Gutkoff is our supermodel.
Athol High School?
We were tired of Aces just bringing their teachers, so we brought our teachers. So, happy to have Ms. Berlin here, Ms. Berlin was actually the one that nominated Aces, I'm going to have Ms. Berlin speak on Aces.
Hi, everybody. I am beyond thrilled to be here, to celebrate Aces. I'm very happy to be here to celebrate Aces. Does that actually help? Either way, hi, yeah, so, I want to read just what I wrote to nominate Aces. Aces is a caring member of our school community. By showing compassion for other students, she makes our community better every day. Thank you, Aces, for all that you do, we're so glad you're here. Aces doesn't only show compassion, but it's connected to the pride matrix that we use at the high school to guide strong behavior and community. So Aces shows participation by speaking up and taking care of other students and our community, and also integrity by being genuine and honest and herself. So role modeling how to be a fantastic high school student, and we're so proud of Aces.
Thank you. Subway Scholar-Athlete of the Month?
I know your mom's here. So, an all-around amazing student, great person, so we started after the month of January tenth, a member of the basketball team, holding ninety, quite a high GPA.
David?
And Athol High School Scholar-Athlete of the Month is Jack Bonafont. Jack is a two-sport athlete at Athol High School who maintains a GPA of three point three-three. Jack is currently playing in a JV basketball game tonight against Marham, but we'd like to recognize Jack Bonafont.
Thank you. At this point, the superintendent would like to do a retirement recognition.
Look at Bob, will you all come up to the mic? This is going to be a hard one. Bob has been here since, long before I arrived, he's been here thirty-six years. The first time I really got to bond with Bob was during the first snowstorm of Athol Royalston, under my leadership, and I asked me to call Bob at four-thirty in the morning and say, "What are we doing here, what's it look like, so forth and so on?" And Bob said, "Don't worry, it's not a problem, you guys, don't worry about it, we'll take care of it." That's Bob's famous word, and I was telling him, I said, "You guys take care of it." Bob has been a very incredible individual to me, as a superintendent, in that he comes to my office, he'll peek in, "Are you okay today? Don't worry about it, it's going to be fine." He probably does it four or five times a week, and is very sincere about that, and very sincere about ensuring that I'm feeling good about being here and being successful. On top of that, he does the same thing with his employees. He's considerate of them, he thinks about them, he makes sure they're getting their needs met any way that he can, and often, sometimes in his own deficit, because what he'll do is, "All right, I'll pull back for five hours to make sure things are done." And he's got to be careful of that, because at the end of the day, he's going to exhaust himself. So when he told me he was going to retire, I had a few words to say to Bob that weren't good, but if it wasn't going to be good, I didn't want him to leave. I begged him to stay, he said, "It's his time, you can't do anything about it, I gotta go." But what I appreciate about Bob is he's been nothing but a gentleman since I've been here, and he's like the dad to, I think, the district team. So I really want to say congratulations, Bob. I'm sorry I haven't been here the whole thirty-six years of your journey, but I hope you'll be around once a week, you'll pop in and say, "Hey, how you doing?" I would appreciate that, and congratulations.
Four-thirty.
Yeah, okay. So, after Bob's death, may you look back at your years of service and feel a sense of accomplishment and pride. May you look to the future as a time of enjoyment and an opportunity to live life to the fullest. Okay, enjoy, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. Under unfinished business, Athol Royalston CPAC?
Do you care if we're just, I'm not ready.
As long as that can pick you up, yes.
Okay.
Just turn it toward you.
The mics, okay. Okay. Okay, so, you know, at the Athol CPAC, we typically come to you and we advise on systemic concerns, and at this point, right now, we would like to advise the board to report to the district, a brief list of concerns, you know, we've uncovered. So, so, please be advised, the following issues represent an incomplete list of systemic concerns that directly impact our students with disabilities. So we did like a stats inquiry, to try to see, okay, well, how many students do we have on IEPs, and how is that divided amongst buildings, amongst with, in addition to 504. So statistically speaking, the current breakdown of students on IEPs in 504s per school is as follows. ARMS has ninety-two children on IEPs, nineteen of them, nineteen students on 504s, and you have a total of five special education teachers. And that breaks down the ratio being eighteen point four caseloads per special education teacher. So that's, that's a lot to do, I don't even know how that's attainable, if you look at it that way, given everything that they have to do, and they work incredibly hard. For ACES, we have a hundred and thirty-nine students on IEPs, fifty-two students on 504s, and eleven special education teachers, and three of those are actually pre-K teachers, so it's kind of like a dual position, so they're confined to just pre-K. And on top of that, so if you just break it down with eleven, you're dividing it right, that would be twelve point six caseloads per special education teacher. But, with that said, we did a little research, and the data that's accessible on Dusty's website, told us that there was about, let's see, for this fiscal year, so twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, it says there was twenty-nine point four percent of pre-K students are, they have disabilities, so that was about, it broke down to sixty-eight in pre-K alone, and three general and teachers, like dual as a special ed teacher have to handle. That, that is a lot, that is astronomical. So then, we had RCS, which, from where we had was nineteen IEPs and two 504s, and they only have two special education teachers over there. So their ratio would be nine point five caseloads per special education teacher. And for the high school, it was seventy-six IEPs and twenty-five 504s, with a total of six special education teachers. So their caseload ratio is twelve point seven per special education teacher. So that's, I mean, you've got to think, they have to write IEPs, they're holding meetings, they're fulfilling, like, the service delivery grid, like, there are so many things that are on their plate. And it was concerning to us to see just how astronomical the numbers are.
I'm sorry. Yes.
Can I ask you a question, Megan?
Yeah.
What does the state say the ratio should be?
I didn't pull that one up, Megan.
Megan!
Listen.
You knew I was going to ask that. Why would I not ask that?
You know, well-
Do you know the answer?
You two are supposed to be helping.
Well, all the facts, all the facts.
Hey. So, but, you know, that's a lot, and I feel like that's incredibly hard to expect, that cool amount of people to handle, and I know that we have some really brilliant and incredible special education teachers that work incredibly hard, and it's just a shock for them, like, they take this home at night. So, if they're not able, if they don't feel like, hey, I can meet the needs of my students, like, I can only imagine how they must feel every single day doing that, because they are working tirelessly, and I don't think that that's fair to the children, I don't think that's fair to them, just overall systematically, that's a big issue, and out of all of them, it looked like ARMS has the highest caseload. But again, with ACES, you know, it's divided, so it's not, this is just like a straight divide. Some probably have more than that, which is incredible, that they're even functioning at this point. So, moving forward, we also asked for, you know, how many OT, PT, and all that we had, it was two OTs, two PTs, one person for vision, two psychologists, one person for orientation and mobility, and it says one person for BCB, out of an entire district. So that's a lot, and I don't even, it was hard for us to read those numbers, and realize that these are our kids, and these are our educational champions trying to work with, like, we can't move forward and meet the needs of all of those students effectively, and level that playing field for them, and that's important, that's what we're here for. We're here to foster their growth so that they flourish and can be, you know, have a meaningful, successful life, and we're not doing them any justice on any level with what we have right now. So for that part, you know, we won't be thought, why don't, why is this happening? What can we do to help? So, I know we have like the Student Opportunity Act meeting coming up, and, you know, we will be in attendance for that, but we were proposing to do just a budget review, to see why special education is inadequately funded, you know, in particular buildings, and we request that, you know, CPAC is given a seat at that table and a voice in the matter as part of that review, and what we could do to have a solution to that, so that all parties benefit, because that's what we're here for, for everyone, we're not just here for one party, we're here to make things better all around, and we take our positions incredibly seriously and to heart. Yep. And then, so, we did get the Special Education Procedure Manual, and we did want to advise, and I kind of briefly talked with Kate where I was kind of breaking it down, where I was trying to like add like visual storytelling, flow charts, and going through that, it was like a hundred and thirty-two pages, so, thank you for sending that to Kate. And I had kind of spoken with her briefly about how we could work on maybe revamping it, but we did see a lot of things in there, like a multitude of areas of non-compliance within the manual, so we wanted to do a meeting, and we have one coming up, but I didn't know if we wanted to be broader with it, like, bring in some special education teachers as well, and the principals to go over, and some kind of, like, an executive meeting to talk about, okay, well, here's what we have, why don't we go through, see what's wrong, how can we fix it? So that there's a clear understanding of policies, procedures, protocols, and that is in the manual, just the procedures and protocols, because if our teachers aren't being told certain things, or it's not clear enough for them, or it may not be in compliance, then it's just like a snowball effect, and the ultimate people that's our, our kids. And so, this is my last part, and then I'm done. So lastly, you know, as we discussed during the December eighteenth meeting, you know, many of our policies are outdated, so as an example, we, one of the current policies was J I C F C, health and safety, student disturbances. So we pulled that one, and that one was adopted-
Megan, could you give that designation again, J I C?
Yep, J I C F C. I have it, Fred. I'll give you a coffee.
Well, I can get it from administration, I just wanted to make sure that I had the right-
Okay, so that one, we adopted it on September of nineteen seventy, and we, it was amended in June of nineteen seventy-two, and April of nineteen seventy-six. That's a long time ago. So, with that said, we're hereby requesting to meet, you know, at the earliest, can be at the earliest feasible date, we, you know, the policy subcommittee in unison with district officials to recall and comprehensively review all district policies, procedures, and protocols, so that we can all sit together and collaborate in an effort to work in a positive, solution-oriented collaboration for the greater good of our children, families, and educators. Okay, finish, thank you.
Thank you. Chuck?
Just a compliment and a question.
Compliment?
Yes.
My ease to those.
I appreciate you drilling down, you know, into, into a lot of the numbers, and so, too, one of the things I think that's really tricky about, because I have a background in special education, is you have to keep drilling even further, I think, to get the real numbers, you know, you know that, you know, it's service delivery hours, really, per teacher, you know, a teacher might have sixteen kids, but that kid might be very needy for us, too, or they may not be, or, you know, so, numbers are very hard to assign in special education to the actual amount of service delivery that's necessary. And compliance issues, so I think the thing that we probably are most concerned about is, you know, are we complying with IEPs? Now, effectively, are we doing them? And, you know, I guess my question to you is, you know, is, you know, if you could maybe give us thoughts or advice about that, you know, hopefully, parents are feeling that their kids are getting, you know, a certain level of what they should get, or should get, that's what an IEP is for. So, and when you have those issues, maybe we have a way, you know, through the special ed department first, you know, to try and resolve those, and, you know, and if you're having difficulty with that, I would imagine the committee would want you.
Right.
I think that's kind of my question.
Yeah, and I get it, but I just, I feel like when we even put ninety-two and five to team meetings, regardless of, let's say, kids, some of them are now services, that's still five IEPs, like, five teachers that are responsible for writing ninety-two IEPs, holding annuals, holding re, like, all of that, that's, that's a lot. Team meetings, everything, like, I would be, I'm exhausted even thinking about it, and I don't do, I don't know how they do it, I really don't.
Fortunately, I think IEP writing's become a little more efficient than it used to.
Kate knows my language, or?
Mit.
The words for IEPs.
You know, you know that, uh, you know, it's service delivery hours really for, for a teacher. You know, a teacher might have sixteen kids, but that kid might be very needy for us to, or they may not be. Or, you know, so, so numbers are very hard to assign in special education to the actual amount of service delivery that's necessary. And compliance issues. So I think the thing that we probably are most concerned about is, you know, are we complying with IEPs? Now effectively, are we doing that? And, you know, I guess my question to you is, you know, is, is, you know, if you could maybe give us thoughts or advice about that. You know, we, you know, hopefully parents are feeling that their kids are getting, you know, a, a certain level of what they should get, or should get that what they get. That's what an IEP is for. So when you have those issues, maybe we have a way, you know, through the special ed department first, you know, to try and resolve. And, you know, and if you're having difficulty with that, I would imagine the committee would want you.
Right.
So I think that's kind of my.
Yeah, and then again, but I just, I feel like when we even put ninety-two and five team meetings coming in, like regardless of, like, let's say, um, kids, some of them are now services, that's still five IEPs. Like five teachers that are responsible for writing ninety-two IEPs, holding annuals, holding, like, all of that. That's, that's a lot. Team meetings, everything. Like, I would be, I'm exhausted even thinking about it. And I don't do, I don't know how they do it. I really don't.
Fortunately, I think IEP writing's become a little more efficient than it used to.
Kate knows my language.
Uh, Mitch.
My lines.
Thank you.
Mitch.
I wanted to say a couple of things. One is, uh, first of all, I also welcome your input and your hard work on this. And you're looking at the data. But I did want to say, I, I know that Lee gives that caution at the beginning when he indicates that the meeting is being taped for, uh, for playing on our website later on. So that I know that the people in the audience hear what we have to say and that our larger audience throughout Athol and Royalton hear what we have to say as well. And my comments now are meant for those people as well as for the people who are here tonight. And that is that you say that we take our positions incredibly seriously and to heart. I want to assure you and the people who are watching this program that we also take our positions incredibly seriously and to heart. And I don't mean just the school committee, but I mean the administration here as well. I can't think that I've heard one more, one word more often than the following word since our superintendent has been here, and that is equity. And by equity, she is talking about making sure that all groups and all, uh, all students have access to a highest possible education. And that means students with special needs, students who may be gifted, students who are dealing with poverty and homelessness, students who are English language learners, students who are minorities or people of color. And all of those people deserve our attention. And I know that you feel that way as well, and I appreciate that. At the same time as you, as your unique position in standing up for students with special needs and five oh fours, for example. But I, I do want to tell you that, that this is something that's on all of our minds and in all of our hearts. And I know that even in the, uh, the new budget that's coming up, some of the staff changes are, are being suggested in, in terms of ensuring greater compliance with IEPs. So everything that you're saying is very important, but I want to assure you that it's also important to each of us. And that's why we, we do welcome your comments and your research.
Oh yeah, I never thought it wasn't important. That was never even a thought in my mind.
Thank you.
So don't worry about that, Mitch.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Under new business, the FY twenty-one budget?
Yes. Um, so let me pack it tonight. Um, I believe Lynn has given you the line-by-line items for the budget, which is the next step. We got our presentation on what we are interested in doing. Um, and now this shows you line-by-line how we are actually spending those funds. I think it was in the front of your table, not necessarily in the back there. Uh, but we wanted to give that to you and see if there were any questions that people have. If, to start with, in regard to that line-by-line budget.
We did identify the SOA funding. Um, so we get to a line that says SOA decided. Obviously, those are the, again, this is just a draft. This is, uh, I mean, it cannot, cannot be changed or moved around. But um, based on what we've presented already, the SOAs are in here. So for example, on page three, you'll see three of the SOA positions.
I just want to make sure we're clear for the public. We have not made full decisions on the SOA money yet. What we have done is we presented our thought process on the SOA money. But we will be having directly after February vacation, an evening where parents can come and give us their opinion. So I want to make sure that as we're developing the budget, we have to begin to kind of figure out where should these things go. But it doesn't mean these are our final thoughts. We have, um, still have community involvement in this. We've spent out, sent out specialized letters to people. Um, we have posted it on our website, letting people know that we will be having a meeting directly after February vacation um, to discuss that and, and get public input because it is required as part of the SOA money. And I know for a fact that the letters have gone out because today I already received one email from a parent saying she can't be there that night, but here's her thoughts on it. Um, so please know that as Lynn goes through, none of this is permanent. And when it comes to SOA, it's just a sense of our thinking, but that thinking could change.
Another thing about the SOA too is we haven't been given exact figures yet for SOA. So we're, we're using a guess as we sent another DES media question today. Because the increase that we saw in chapter seventy is split between our enrollment increases and our SOA. So, uh, I'm trying to get from them, what piece of it is SOA, what piece of it is enrollment? And at this point, uh, we're just guessing about five hundred and thirty-five thousand for SOA, um, and the balance of it is for enrollment. We did have an increase of enrollment in our chapter seventy of thirty-eight kids, which usually that's about ten thousand dollars a kid. So that's two hundred and eighty dollars, two hundred and eighty thousand there. Um, so again, just some small, um, um, you know, memos beside some line items that I thought, you know, we might want to take a look at. Or, or you know where all the SOAs, where we're, we're placing them, can be changed. For example, adding some mentors to the budget because we will be adding some staff. So if you add staff, you have to add, add some mentors. Um, we added, uh, health insurance because again, if you add staff, you have to add health insurance. Um, and then, um, you know, some other things like, uh, our, um, our transportation went up a bit because we do know that we've got a wheelchair ban that we're going to have to take care of, and that's, uh, is extensive. So that, that's been put into, into the budget. So anything we can think of, any new information we're getting, and we're still getting new information on a daily basis. Um, so right now, snapshot in time, basically, you look at the bottom of the bu, the, the budget that we're developed here is, um, proposed for twenty-five million, nine hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Of that, fifty thousand of dollars of, there's a line item in here for our debt for our high school, so that's also in here. So we'd like to take that out and just let you know what our operating budget is. So our operating budget proposal for fiscal twenty-one is twenty-five million, eight hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Um, again, to be reviewed again. This is a line item budget that we give you. We will have a budget sub. Our next budget sub is on March eleventh, um, where we can start banging out any changes, um, to be made on this. And if you've got any questions in between, I know you're just seeing it now, any questions in between, shoot me an email. Um, we'll, we'll try to explain as much as we can.
And I do want to let people know, we have subcommittees for the school committee that are public. So people like the CPAC, if they want to come and give their opinion on any of these, they can come to any of the subcommittee meetings. And so I want to make sure that is clear because I think there may be a, a, a sense that we're not welcoming people. They are all published online, the times and dates in which they occur, and that's where we look for public feedback. And so during those subcommittee meetings, if anybody wants to discuss the budget, if anybody wants to discuss policy procedures, that's the place in which we usually have those. And those are public forums, they are posted, and anyone is welcome to come.
Thank you. Chuck?
I just had two comments about the budget process itself. And being a member of the budget subcommittee, I've been very impressed with two things. I think that I have a confidence that this budget has flowed from where it should flow, and that's the school level. And it's moved its way through principals and into the central office and the unit, or it should. So when you come to us and say, you know, here's our rationale for X and Y. Principal said this, teacher said that, you know, numbers say this, numbers say that. So I see a well-reasoned budget process that I have a confidence in as a member of the budget subcommittee, and I compliment you for that, both of you.
Carla, sorry.
I just wanted to say that the first two things I noticed on this sheet here um, that were related to the SOA money were the additions of two of the sped positions. Um, you know, so it's, it's not like we are not aware of or not taking seriously the shortage of sped staff.
Anyone else? Okay. Uh, signs of suicide?
I'm gonna have Amanda Pagan come up. I don't know if she has other people with her to discuss, um, the program that we will now be doing in regards to that at the high school.
Hi. Um, so I'm joined tonight by, with Heather Berlin, one of our counselors at the high school, and Kelly Kupar, the health teacher at the high school. So just a little background around this program that we're looking to roll out called Signs of Suicide. Uh, the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office was awarded some funding. We were contacted last spring, um, with the hope that they would be able to implement violence prevention mental health training programs in the next few years in Massachusetts. So they've joined up with, um, sorry. Uh, they've joined up with Sandy Hook Promise out of Newtown, Connecticut. Um, and we've been doing some work with them this year so far. So we started with a program called Start With Hello. Um, and somebody from Sandy Hook Promise came out and gave the presentation to all the high school students and then, um, the sixth through eighth graders at the middle school, including the RCS sixth graders. Um, so it's a really simple program. Start with hello. You see someone alone. You recognize the signs of loneliness and social isolation. Reach out to help and see what you can do to help these people, the other people to feel included. And then how to break the ice and start up a conversation. Really simple. Um, the next step is that all of the district counselors, the nurses, and the middle school and high school health teachers, um, we had a train the trainer program in Signs of Suicide. So essentially, uh, we're here tonight with, uh, with the hope that you guys will support us in implementing this program. Um, so what we'll do is, as building-based teams, um, we'll, we'll meet together and plan our pilot for this year. Um, faculty and staff will be trained. We'll offer, offer a parent event. Um, and then parents will be asked to complete, um, what we call a passive consent form if they want to opt their child out of the program.
Uh, if you'd, I don't know if we need a motion, but obviously if you'd like to make a motion of support, that's fine. Motion made in second. Is there a discussion on the motion? Chuck?
Before I make the motion, I just wanted to compliment your, your work with this. I don't think people realize that suicide's the number one killer in the country, period.
Yeah.
And it doesn't matter car accidents, is that, anything, suicide. And, uh, it happens at every level, from kids on up and down, and it's pretty scary, and this is very timely.
Yeah, and you'll see some of the, the district data that we have from the teen, um, health survey that was given last spring. I did not put the eighth grade numbers on here, but you can see the tenth and twelfth graders, um, reporting things around feeling hopeless and, and thinking about suicide. So they're, they're very significant.
In this community, like all, we have been affected by it.
Yeah, yes.
Mitch?
Are those, um, I know you don't have the eighth grade numbers, but the tenth grade numbers, which are substantially higher in tenth than in twelfth grade, is that typical or is that unique for, um, for our area?
I'm not sure. I'd have to look back more at the left, previous data. I'm not entirely sure.
Anyone else?
And the motion?
That's our.
Start with second.
Yep, yep. Anything else to add before we vote?
No, all the information's here.
Okay. All those in favor? Ananmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, vote on virtual school student cap.
Okay, David King's gonna come up and explain to you.
But basically, we have an opportunity as a district, um, based on the Massachusetts state law in regards to virtual schools. So pretty much, virtual schools in Massachusetts are public schools. And any student in the state has the ability to register and enroll in these virtual schools. There's two of them in the state of Massachusetts. There's some statutes that, that these virtual schools have to abide by. And one of them is applicable to us here in the Athol Royalston Regional School District. It's basically in regards to the one percent rule. So at any time, over one percent of our student body population here is enrolled in one of those virtual schools, then we have the ability by the mark, by March first, to vote that we have closed our ability for our students to access these virtual schools. Um, so that's what we're looking for tonight. We're looking to have a discussion and to see if the school committee would like to entertain the ability to send a letter to the DESE. And basically says, based on the negative impact of school choice, we would like to, for the next school year, limit, um, the ability for students, over one percent of our student body population, to attend these virtual schools.
I think Nancy Beebe.
Just, um, I think it's important to stress how much this costs the district.
Lynn has the exact number.
There are twenty, currently twenty-one virtual school kids on our, um, school choice, um, fund. And each one of those costs eighty-two hundred dollars, eighty-five maybe, right around there. So they cost a lot more than, um, school choice kids, which are usually about five. So, um, twenty-one, and we could, if we capped it, we could have capped it at fifteen. Um, what, so I called the state and I said, okay, we've already got twenty-one, which is over our fifteen. How are we going to do this and who's going to keep an eye on this? According to the state, um, they will calculate our cap once we vote. We'll cal, calculate our cap on fifteen. That will be the maximum that we will be charged for any, um, virtual school students. So if there's twenty-one on our rosters and we can't kick them out, we can't tell them they can't go, we, they will then start charging us less than eighty-five just to, just to get to that maximum. So that's how they're gonna do it. I thought was, that's an odd way of doing it, but it, it will work. So, um, that's how they're gonna do it.
Yeah, I think that's important to know. Any, any student that's already in it has the ability to stay in it until they graduate.
Yeah, I, I see the effect that this has certainly budgetarily. I think that's, you know, kind of our primary jobs, however. Um, I was surprised to hear that we had twenty-one kids, you know, that were, you know, in this school district that were enrolled in this. And I'm sure they have very finite reasons for being members in this. Um, you know, could it be in place of homeschooling? Could it be because of social reasons? Could it be, I'd like to know that before we cap it. Uh, I think it's, you know, I, I don't know. I think, I would feel responsible as a citizen, school committee member, uh, to say, yeah, we're only gonna let X amount of people do this without knowing why kids do this and why families do this. So that's how I feel.
Anyone else? Is there a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we get more information from families who might be members of this, these twenty-one people as to the reasons or rationale why they have chosen this.
Yeah, we could attempt to do that. Whether the families choose to give us the information or not is, is the dilemma. Um, and so ultimately, we could ask the question, um, uh, but like I said, whether the parents are gonna give us feedback or not is, is another story. Um, so we're more than willing to do that. Uh, I don't know how successful we'll be at it, but, um, we're more than willing to do that. But I think we have to make this decision before March first. So we can wait and get that information, but we will not be able to cap it next year if we don't make the decision tonight.
David, who, how many of the twenty-one are seniors?
I don't know that. I, I believe there's, when I asked Ms. Hughes, our admin assistant, she believes seven of them were high school students.
Okay.
So the rest come from either elementary s- school or.
And what's important, I want to emphasize is twenty-one in there now will not be removed. We're not taking any away. It's just moving forward. And so that's what I want you to know. So we're not gonna take away the kids currently in virtual school. They're not going anywhere. They'll stay there.
But aren't they pretty, aren't they pretty close to what that percentage cap would be right now?
We're, we're beyond the percentage cap. But we're gonna keep those kids that are currently there. Uh, but my worry or concern is if we don't put a cap on it, and four hundred kids decide to go into virtual school, that's a real problem for us.
Unless they do, that would do us something wrong.
Right. Well, but, but I also think that at the end of the day, what's different between us as a public school and these other schools, sometimes the recruiting strategies that happen in behind us that we don't necessarily know about, and that can get in the way. So, um, I highly recommend we put a cap on it, uh, because it's a, it's also a way to anticipate our budget. Without that, we're always going to be in a situation where we can't necessarily anticipate our budget for you.
Carla, then Bill.
Um, I'm just wondering, once these kids sign up for a virtual school, do we as a system have any further responsibility for the kids? Do we follow up? Do we provide any services? Where are we in that case?
No.
We just pay.
Yeah.
We just pay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be like they went to any other school in Massachusetts.
Right, okay.
Is it Greenfield?
So Greenfield has a virtual school. The other one's named Teca.
Bill?
I move to, um, set the virtual school student cap at fifteen.
Yes.
I think you should say one percent because that each.
Yeah, 'cause you go to two thousand, it would go up.
You want one percent rather than fifteen? At one percent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mitch?
For the board, we already had a motion on the floor.
There was no second.
There was no second.
In second, but there was no.
Right, that's why I moved on. Right, that's why I moved on. There was no second.
I was going to second it for the purpose of discussion.
Okay, it's too late. There's, there's a motion made in seconded.
That's all right.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, question.
Sure.
Uh, if we set a cap this evening and more, um, more research is done to, uh, to answer the kinds of questions that, uh, Mr. Preddy brings up, which I think are good questions, can we have another go at this next year?
Absolutely. Discuss it again.
Okay.
Yep. Tammy?
Do we have a right to deny a child virtual school based upon the reason in which they request it?
The, the statute only allows, uh, 1%. Uh, so, once you hit, once you go over 1%, you have, you have their right to deny.
So, we can deny.
Only if, only by, only by voting.
We don't deny anything. It would be the virtual school that would have to choose, do they want to take this child and not get their 85? They might end up getting 65, but that was, that would be their choice.
But not on us.
Not on us.
And just so we're, um, clear about this, the number 15 versus 21.
Right now.
Places a cap at 15, which does not enable any kids in this next year to take part in the virtual school in a new basis.
Unless some, right, right.
Depending on seniors who are new.
On a new basis.
That's not true, Chuck. What it is, is our, it's 1% of our budget, okay? So, I want to make sure you're clear. That they could still go to the virtual school if the virtual school will accept them at $5,000 rather than, what they do is take the, whatever you 1% of your budget is, and they divide it by the number of kids that are currently there.
And currently, it's approximately 8,500?
We pay approximately 8,500 right now per child. Correct.
So, basically, if we, if we take the 1% right now, they're going to take that 21. They're going to take 15. They're going to figure out 15, divide it by, you know, the 8500.
Right, but I'm still worried though, are, are we prohibiting any kids in this next year?
There's no prohibiting.
Yep, the kids who are currently in it will stay.
Right, but are we prohibiting any new kids from that option?
Possibly. Depends on the virtual school. It's not our decision.
Nancy.
Wouldn't they at that point just choice to a different district? Mather only has six. So, they can pick up a whole bunch of people, can't they?
Can they choice and go to virtual school?
Once they're in that district, they can then select, I believe, yes. It's just like the tech school. We run into that problem where kids will come here, choice in, and then decide to go to the tech school. It comes out of our budget. It doesn't come out of the town in which they live.
Is that a money loss for us if that happens?
Of course.
Everything's a money loss.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Post? Two. Thank you.
Okay, so I will sign the document.
Okay, yep. Uh, to open, uh, vote to open school store SAA account at Athol High School.
So, uh, Athol High School's looking to open a school store in, uh, just off the cafeteria. In order to do that, we need to open a, an account with our school activities, uh, fund. Looking, looking for approval for that.
Is there a motion?
I have a motion.
John, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Okay, thank you. Up next, approval of handbook changes.
Okay, did you want to speak to that?
Um, in your packet, you have, uh, the two or three pages that we're proposing a change to. They're, we're, under, we are, they're seeking a period of review right now at the state level, so the state monitor has suggested these changes, as well as some of the changes to the discipline policy, uh, which were modified by, uh, turn of years.
Is there a motion?
I have a motion to...
Second. Motion made in seconded. Discussion. Mitch?
Just a question, how does this tie in with any, any policy changes as far as the policy committee is concerned?
No, these are all under the, the disciplines, all under the law, and follows our policy. Um, the second page changes, uh, was recommended. He had quite an extensive procedure written for sexual harassment, but nothing around just plain harassment and discrimination. So, all I did there was add those two into that procedure, add the recommendation to the study.
Thank you.
Anything further? Seeing none, all is in favor? Sure. Thank you. School choice purchasing?
So, here we are currently at is, as you know, we have been in the process of rehabbing the high school, and we want to continue that. And the nice thing about school choice funds is when we put a savings aside, we are in a situation where we can use those funds to help support, um, things within the district. The problem with the school choice funds is if you use it for a teaching position, it's a one-year piece. So, what I'd like to recommend tonight, um, is that we purchase, um, some new material...
Just a second, I'll just look that up.
Look, uh, you should have this document in front of you to actually purchase for the high school. We've done a really good job getting the outside of the building done, but we're still dealing with 19, I don't know what, furniture. I mean, it's outdated, it needs to be replaced. And so, right now, we are in a situation with our school choice fund that we believe we have won up money and still have a significant saving to do this, but we need a, um, vote from the school committee. So, if you take a look, we're looking at one, to paint 16 classrooms at the high school at about $15,000. Uh, high school classroom furniture at about 110,000, and I believe Dave, that will pay for a whole floor.
Sure.
16 classrooms. Um, in addition to that, pay for cap, uh, furniture. If you've been in the cap, those tables in there are for elementary school kids, and we've got high school kids sitting in them. We need to replace those. It would replace the gym lighting, um, in the, in there, kind of make it more efficient, is also save us on electric bills, putting more security cameras. One of the things that our parents have been asking is, "Do you have any video of the incident?" We only can record so many video cameras. This will allow us to put more video cameras into each of the schools to make them even safer. And then the other piece, as, um, was mentioned, was our technology is going to be outdated. So, we want to put enough money in to also purchase more Chromebooks for the district. So, this comes to $280,000, um, in purchases for that, and, uh, based on the recommendation of our business manager, I believe we will still be more than, uh, solid in our savings account in doing this, so we're recommending that the school committee vote tonight to actually approve this funding.
Is there a motion?
To the, yeah, you.
Uh, motion Mitch, and Ken second. Sure. Discussion. Seeing none, all is, oh, sorry.
Definitely in favor of the motion. I just wanted, uh, to ask what happens to the old classroom equipment, to the old Chromebooks, et cetera, do we make, I'm sure we must make some effort to, yeah.
Surplus.
Yeah, what has happened in my past districts is we give a day when families can come from the community and take whatever's there, um, and then what's left gets, gets put out. Um, so that would be my suggestion to the district because the community paid for it, therefore they should have the opportunity to, to be able to access it. And we've seen in the past, VFWs, um, American Leagues, common action takes the furniture. Um, so that's what I would suggest.
Thank you. Good idea.
Yeah, any further? See, ooh, go ahead.
Just wanted to make a quick comment. Um, I went up for the eighth grade night, um, that they put on up at the high school, and I couldn't believe the conditions of some of the classrooms in terms of the furniture and the painting and the walls. This makes me, as a parent, super excited for my kids to be going there next year, so thank you for doing that.
Seeing nothing further. All those in favor? Post, okay, thank you.
All right, so we can make that print for court. All right.
Surplus equipment. You have in front of you a document from the retiring Bob Rulo, um, that would like to have, uh, the items as submitted declared as surplus equipment. Is there a motion?
I make that motion.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all is in favor.
Is Bob also surplus equipment?
Yes. Sorry, Bob.
Couldn't resist it.
Thank you.
I'll be off, be just a bit safer if you want to be on. All, all you...
Uh, you have in your packet, under Communications, the enrollment sheet. We don't necessarily discuss that, but if you have any questions, feel free to, uh, contact the superintendent's office. Uh, financial statements and approval accounts, to date expenditure report.
Okay, all your financial reports in your, in your, uh, packet, um, again, you're, uh, you're moving along good. We're making transfers as you're voting them, um, transfers as, uh, new staff come in and out. Um, do you think you hear significant that I want to go over with you? Uh, on page five is the, uh, the textbooks. Um, we are making, um, uh, we're purchasing some of our textbooks this year, which you know about, um, from our, from our budget, from this week, from one into this budget. Um, other than that, I don't, I don't see anything, um, that stands out for me. If there's anything you would like to comment on?
Okay, thank you. Mitch?
Just a quick, uh, congratulations, again, for your, uh, ability to use, uh, funds and move them around, uh, in a, uh, appropriate way, uh, to allow us to purchase this, this year.
Revenue report?
Uh, revenue report, basically, again, the same. Um, we, we do actually expect more funds to come in than what was budgeted. Um, I did have that on here, the, the chapter 70 will get, uh, about $20,000 more in chapter 70, based on the last final state budget we got. When we, when we do our budget, we, um, we use the governor's budget, which is the first one that comes out. And then after that, there's three renditions before the final state figures come out. So, we always usually use the governor's budget because we have to have our budget in by March or April, so we don't even see those last renditions until June or July. So, um, sometimes when we, when we set our budget, we get a surprise, and we do get some extra chapter 70 funds. Our transportation, um, funds are going to be much higher than what was expected. A charge of school labor, the funds will be a little bit higher, and our miscellaneous receipts, I think, are going to be a little bit lower. So, everything else seems to be coming in just fine.
Okay, thank you. Budget line transfer?
All right, we should have a budget line transfer sheet. Um, basically, what we've done is, um, reviewed, reviewed, and reviewed our, our district, uh, tuitions to a point where we, we believe we can transfer now some, um, budget, um, figures strong. Does everybody have it still? It's on the other side of the, I tried to use both sides of paper, so it might go in. There you go. Um, so, we're going to transfer 73,000 out of high school private aid tuition, 50,000 out of middle school private aid tuition, and transfer into curriculum so that we can get our, uh, social, uh, science and folk studies that we expected to get in fiscal '21 into our 20. Um, so the vote is 123, 751.
Is there a motion?
I have a motion to...
Second.
Two, two.
He, he makes a motion to second.
Yep, there you go.
Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
You're catching on, it's there, Chuck. I'm impressed.
It's a long term.
Uh, vote foster transportation reimbursement, MOU.
Okay, so there's an MOU, um, form, I guess it is what you call it, in, in your, in your packet that I sent. It says memorandum of, of understanding every student's history, succeed, mark, transportation planning, under the title, 4E of Social Security.
Is there a motion?
I have a motion.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all is in favor? Thank you. Uh, vote to adopt Massachusetts continuing disclosure procedures as provided by Lock Lord.
Okay, again, um, in your packet, Athol Royalston Regional School District, continuing disclosure procedures. And, uh, Fred was, uh, kind enough to go over these with us. These are new procedures that, uh, all financial institutions are giving out, so because we're borrowing for the high school, we have to have this on file.
Make a motion to it.
Okay.
Second.
Oh, Mitch had a misfire on a second.
No, that was just like, he ended up making a motion.
Okay, perfect. Uh, any questions? Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Okay, vote to set up regional transportation fund.
Okay, another document in your file, the fiscal '21 budget 8.2, says at the top. Um, basically, this is from, uh, Julie Kelly at Marsh. Important reminder, the fiscal '19 budget stuff, the regional transportation will be calculated in the first of February. We will be getting some extra funding in, uh, regional transportation and circuit breaker that they will give us for this year. We don't know exactly what that's going to be, but what they've suggested is that we set up a regional transportation fund. It will be similar to what our school choice fund is now, is it'll be a separate fund. And then if we have extra transportation or circuit, circuit breaker, we can put it in that fund and then disperse it however we would like to, because we don't write at this point, need it for our budget. I make the motion.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all is in favor? Okay, thank you. Uh, grant report to date?
Yep, um, again, a report you, you see every month. Um, we are at two grants this year so far of $1,318,681, and most of it's in Comfort. Um, we've got a balance, small balance left of about 12,000. You'll see that at the very bottom of your report. Um, again, um, grants we get every year and 1.3 is, is, is good, but it is down from what we've been in the past couple of years because our SO, that SRD grant, the one that we got for ACES has been dwindling. When we first got that, four years ago, it was 500,000. Now it's down to 67, so that has, has been going away. So, this is just a, for your information, our grant report.
Okay, thank Mitch.
Just a question, superintendent, who is it, um, in this district appearing on the, this, the grant application?
It's divided, um, so someone written by me, someone written by Kate, someone written by Molly, someone written by Lynn. It all depends on what department it is, um, but that's usually how we, which we handle it.
I know that's a lot of hard work, and I appreciate you both, each of those people putting the time and effort to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, strategic plan update? We don't have one for this evening, so we'll go on to the reports of the committee. The reports of the chair, the only thing I have, uh, my apologies for not moving forward on the McNiff library dedication. I've had to handle some things at work and also, uh, my spouse had surgery, so I've kind of followed a little bit, fallen behind a little bit, but we'll have it and schedule it from mid-March, uh, and I'll also let the McNiff family know that. So, everything is still moving forward, um, but just move it a little bit, so. Nancy?
Can I ask that if we do do it in March, that we have our school community meeting at?
ACES, sure. I was going to plan, kind of like a...
Separate?
Yeah, like we did for, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, budget?
I think we've gone over the budget to death.
I think so too, thank you. Okay, uh, facilities? Okay, uh, facilities?
Um, we met prior to this meeting. Uh, we paid what we hope is the last bill for the high school renovation of approximately a hundred-seventy-eight thousand dollars. Uh, we reviewed the information that you voted on earlier for the high school, um, furniture, et cetera. Um, we have a good report concerning the water situation at the Royal Smith Community School. I think that's basically...
Did you talk about the fence?
Oh, the, yes, we had some fence replacement that was due to, um, that was covered by insurance, uh, in the soccer field, and then there was some near the, um, softball field that was also replaced. Pointed out to us by a neighbor to remind us of, um, the condition of the fence.
Negotiations?
I have nothing to say.
Okay, we'll have an update this evening, okay? Yep, academic excellence?
Um, because of the change in school committee dates, we did not meet this month. We will resume, um, next month, March eighteenth. Our next meeting will be at nine AM on Wednesday, the eighteenth of March.
Okay. Public relations?
Um, just echo what Deb just said, because of the change in school committee dates, we did not meet this month.
Okay, thank you. Uh, policy subcommittee?
Policy subcommittee, um, I believe there are eleven in, there's a packet of, of, um, policies, some for a second reading, some for a third. I believe there's eleven. Would you like me to read them all?
No, I don't, no. Don't take this personal, but no.
I know Chuck does, but, you know. Okay, no, that's okay. That's why I asked.
Is there a motion for the eleven on your, as submitted, for second reading?
Yes, there's one.
The second always comes from this side of the table, is aren't you? Is there a second?
Come on, Chuck, second.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, lots of seconds.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
And, um, there are only two for a third reading.
I make a motion to...
Second.
Motion made in seconded for the two for third reading. Any discussion? All is in favor? Thank you.
And as always, the ones that are in orange are already been, have already been approved.
Uh, committee member ref- oh, sorry, go ahead.
And, oh, one more thing, we will be, we are unfortunately not able to meet this month, um, due to a little snafu, and AM instead of PM. Anyway, um, our next policy meeting will be on March eighteenth at ten AM.
Thank you. Committee member referrals, let's start with Carla.
Nothing here.
Chuck?
Yes, I would like to request formally that we can, or so survey those parents of the twenty-one students who are attending the virtual school, as to the rationale. Yes, who are there attending that? And I'd like us to do that in the hope that we can be better informed in our next year of making that choice.
Okay, thank you. Tammy? Bill?
Nothing.
Deb?
Yep.
Mitch?
Uh, Mr. Rulo still here?
Yep.
You might have to wake him, but, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple of words as, uh, Bob Rulo retired. A couple of incidents where he's been fortunate to be, I remember my...
Don't talk about those incidents.
I am gonna talk about those incidents. Second. Uh, I remember my son coming home from Silver Lake in the first or second grade. Bob knows this story, and he was always saying, Mr. Rulo says this, and next day it was, Mr. Rulo says that, Mr. Rulo says this. Well, I assume that Mr. Rulo must be the principal over there, because he was always quoting Mr. Rulo. But that's how close Bob was, uh, to all the kids, uh, and how close he is, uh, has tried to maintain that, even in, um, in his new position. And then I think about the fact that when I was principal, he was always extremely